Shasbury Select Board, I'd like to call this meeting of the Shasbury Select Board to order on Monday, what is it, February 20th at 6:31. First order of business, is there any, does anybody have a conflict of interest with anything shown on the agenda?
No.
No.
No. The next, we have minutes, we have minutes from the past two meetings. The one is for, I don't have the dates right in front of me.
January 30th and February 6th.
Okay, probably better take them separately. Motion to approve the minutes of January 30th?
So moved.
Second. Move by Martha?
Second.
Second by Tony. Discussion, I'd like to bring out that, or make a, make it known that in both of those, both the meetings we're going to vote on, or minutes we're going to vote on, it gave my name and then the word chair afterwards. I think the record should show that our vice chair was actually the acting chair, that Tony Kulikowski was the actual chair of the meeting, and that I was there by Zoom. I think that'll clear things up, because if somebody looks and you'll see that I didn't sign some of the warrants that I approved and all that sort of stuff, it just makes it easier. So I'd like to make that for both meetings, rather than, if I don't repeat this again in the next one, okay? So, is there approval with that adjustment made?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Tony. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. And the next one was February, what was it?
6th.
February 6th. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 6th as adjusted?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. And on another note, Tony, thank you very much for running those meetings.
Hey, no problem.
Okay, what's next? Is it warrants next?
Warrants, yes.
Shall I read them, Art, for you?
Please, Martha.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have check warrant number 27 for $441 for the postage for the postcard that was mailed out, I think, to everybody in the town of Shasbury.
Entertain a motion to pay that warrant?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Martha. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried, 4-0-0. I got a panic call on that one. I need somebody's approval to do this, Dave said.
So, the next check warrant is number 28, and it is for $83,210. The items over $1,000 include $3,677 for A&amp;K Agro Services, $1,235 for A&amp;K Agro Services, $2,872 for Appalachia Salt, $5,662 for Appalachia Salt, $2,851 for Appalachia Salt, $10,218 for Blue Cross Blue Shield, $3,406 for the BRCRC, $1,248 for the Bennington County Sheriff's Department, $1,680 for the Bennington Tire Corp., $1,321 for GA Both Fuels, $1,472 for Nimric, $8,724 for TAM, $3,850 for Tammerac Tree Care, $5,493 for Wallingford Crushed Stone, $8,023 for William E. Daley, $5,191 for William E. Daley, and that is it.
Is there any discussion?
We must be stockpiling the salt then.
Well, you start using it in about 12 hours.
I didn't hear.
I said, we keep it up full, but we're going to start using it in about 12 hours here and through a lot of the week, so we always keep it up to the max.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Our announcements next?
They are.
Martha would...
Yeah, I have two.
Hold that on.
Yep, so our town meeting is Monday, March 6th, at Shasbury Elementary School. 5:00 PM is the potluck. Please bring something to share. We'll be providing a dessert, a sheet cake dessert. And 6 o'clock starts the meeting. All of the items that are up for discussion are on the website, so you can read through all that. And then Election Day is Tuesday, March 7th, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and it is at the Town Garage on North Road.
Thank you, Martha. Anybody else have anything else?
Yes, starting tomorrow morning, the clerk's office and the assessors' office will have limited services. We're doing some environmental work on the lower level of Coal Hall. It's going to take four to five days, so there will be some delays in getting things done. The entire floor will be closed off. And that's it.
Is the vault available, or they'll have to make appointments, or won't be able to use it?
There will be very limited vault access. We're not even quite clear on when we'll be able to access it, depending on the nature of the work as we discover things.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to let everybody know. Okay, thank you.
Is that going to be on the website, just so that folks know?
I don't know if she put it on.
Like an announcement?
I'll have to check to see if she put it on, yeah.
I think that would be nice to just...
It'll be functioning, I mean, they'll just be up here, but they'll be limited. What she normally does is contact, the people who use the vault are the researchers and the attorneys, so she always lets them know when there's going to be complications, which there probably will be. You have to have a complication, or it's not, it's not normal.
Okay, any other announcements? All right, public comments, Zack up next?
Yes.
This.
Okay. I see there's a couple people on Zoom.
Yep, and there's also a few folks out here in the audience as well.
Ken, why don't you slide your chair up to the front there, and you can be the first one.
So Ken Harrington's coming forward.
I'm, uh, named Ken Harrington. I'd like to ask, I've got a couple, three things here. I'd like to ask the board to adopt the town of Bennington solar, or screening of solar facilities, whatever they have, Martha knows what it is. I'd like for this board to adopt that, because as it is right now, Shasbury has no protection from this, from the abortion that they're looking at up at Holy Smoke Road. So, we'll go from, start with that one.
That really is a planning, planning board.
I bought it before the planning board, and I feel the select board and the planning board has both abandoned the town of Shasbury and done nothing on this thing. This is the biggest thing that's ever happened to the town of Shasbury, and right now we have no control of it, of any kind.
Well, it is a big stick in the eye, no doubt. When this solar project first, when they first talked about having solar in Shasbury, I don't think anybody ever even fathomed that it would ever become something like this. Everybody, at least myself, I was thinking, this is for homeowners, for people to make a personal choice to have solar for their house, not for some energy company to come and just drop in, destroy 30 acres of forest, ruin people's property values, abutting neighbors. This is crazy. This is really crazy. And it's a, I think this energy company, they targeted this town, and they just wanted to come in and just ram it down our throats, whether we liked it or not. Like, again, this was something that I felt was for the, for the citizens of Shasbury to make an individual choice to have for their house, not for some energy company to come drop in on Kit and other neighbors and just destroy Holy Smoke, destroy the landscape, the ecosystem, everything. This, I can't see anything positive coming out of this, other than somebody's going to make some money. That's it.
Well, this, this again, this is just public comment, please. This is not a debate. This is public comment, please.
Right, I'm not debating, I'm just making a public comment.
We take Ken's comment.
Art, I just want to make a clarifying comment about it. I think what Ken is talking about is the Bennington Solar Ordinance, which the Select Board passed, not the, not the Planning Commission. They have two separate, separate things, so I think that that's what Ken was referring to as to what he was asking for.
The Select Board can pass this tonight. It doesn't need, this could override the Planning Board. And the Planning Board and the Select Board has dropped the ball on us, they have done anything on it.
Then let me pick up the ball. I'll make a motion, once we get out of public comment, we'll make a motion to put this on the ballot.
Okay. Now, the next thing is, under the Shasbury zoning, Section 9.15, or Section 1 and 2, under that, under that ordinance, that zoning, or that solar farm violates that. Under subdivision ordinance, 7.3, Section 1, 2, 5, and 6, it also violates that on town ordinance says. And I feel that the Select Board and the Planning Commission has done nothing on that
Can you just repeat that? I got Section 9, 1, and 2, and what was the second section, please?
Subdivision, under the subdivision, Section 7.1, 7.1, 7.3.
Yep.
And under that, Section 1, 2, 5, and 6.
Thank you.
And I asked the board to vote on that too, because you're violating your own town ordinance by letting that thing in there. And the thing is, if you, if the town does it, take a position on it, that when it gets to the state division that handles this stuff, we got no say in it, virtually no say. And the other thing I would like to say, is I would like to tell you, you guys refused, and when I was here on January 30th, to put this on the ballot, so that the people in the town of Shasbury would have a say on it. And that would have the most important effect on the state board against. I ask now that you put up a special election for the town to vote on this thing. And if it doesn't do anything more, now I talked to some of the residents up there. If they moved that thing back 300 yards from Holy Smoke Road, and left the 30 acres of woodland in there, they wouldn't have as much opposition to this thing. And put a permanent screen that had to be maintained. All you've got to build out is a mammoth eyesore, that everybody on that side of town has got, their property values will be worth 20 cents. You take a half a million dollar house, it's all for $2. It's not right. I want to see more development in this town too. I want more money coming into this town, but not that way.
No, it's got to be done right.
That's like going down on Broadway, hiring a prostitute. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Be more worried, boys.
Sorry.
You woke up everybody in the country.
Well, thank you, Ken, for bringing that to our attention about the being in violation. That's, and we don't want to be in violation of any of our own rules.
That's your ordinance. If you're going to do that, why have them?
That's right.
Hi, I'm Mike August, I live on Holy Smoke Road. So, a couple of things, I know when this first got brought up in the Select Board, as well as the Planning Board, both committees say that they won't have any say. So, at our public meeting, all the state people said, you certainly do have an opinion. And that's taken in by the utility committee. So, I think it's very important that you, that you give an opinion that we all think is very important, which means we oppose this. That'd be one thing. And the other thing that was talked about by the company is that they had conversations with the Select Board since 2017. We haven't heard that. I'd like to know what that was about, respectively. That's a question.
I would too.
I have not had any communication with them about this since, I think the first communication was about three months ago, three to four months ago, when I first heard about this. So, and I've been on the Select Board for, since 2014, I have not heard anything about this.
All right. Mr. Reed Willis said that. So I think there must have been something about why they wanted to come here. They said that, maybe it's not you guys, but it was somebody. He said that, you know, we were welcome to. Nobody's got any idea. Okay, those were the two things I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, why don't you just, why don't you just leave that there for the next person, if you don't mind switching chairs?
Hi, my name is Tom Smith. My address is 350 Blueberry Hill Road. First, I wanted to thank the town, I know it's not specifically this committee, but perhaps for hosting the public hearing at the elementary school a couple weeks ago. I found that incredibly informative. I listened to it on Zoom. And my takeaway from that meeting was, a lot of what we hear regularly at these meetings, that there's a lot of apprehension and a lot of resistance, and a lot of people in this town that don't want this project. And so I just have a simple question to the Select Board is, what is the process and what would you, what would it take for the Select Board to do, as Ken said, approach the state, the Public Utility Commission, and state that the town, on behalf of the town, that we don't want this project? What's it going to take to do that? Is my question. And you don't have to necessarily answer that now, but I'd like you to think about it, because I think that's what the town is asking for.
I think the board has to come to an agreement, maybe design a letter, send it off, or an email. Let it be known that, I mean, I'm against it. I mean, I don't know about Martha or anybody else that can't speak for them, but...
So there is a process that we have kind of put up on the website, which involves 12, I think at least 12 steps. And so there are various points in that 12-step process that parties that are subject to kind of this proceeding will have the ability to make that statement at that time. So I suspect, and I don't know, because we have not had a conversation yet on that, that that will be the moment or the time when those steps come up, where those parties are allowed to kind of have those conversations.
And that's on the town website?
On the town website, there's a guide to the...
12-step program?
It sounds like a 12-step program. It's a guide to the PUC process, and I think that there's a...
It is.
Enlisted out kind of each step.
This, the actual filing won't be done by the company till the end of March. That triggers a meeting to start setting dates and appointments. And at that stage, comments are taken normally from the town, and the town government, and the Planning Commission. That's when they make the statement to the PUC. The PUC does weigh some, some weight to what the Select Board and the PC has. If we had that energy thing in our town plan, we would have more weight, but it's not there. But they haven't completed a plan yet, so when they file that at the end of March, all the data will be on the table. And then I suspect the board will be reviewing that along with the Planning Commission.
So, once that plan is filed, then you'll have a chance to, the Select Board will have a chance to respond on behalf of the town?
Correct, because alls we have now is the one sheet from the one notice. The entire plan, from what I understand, is quite a bit larger, with a lot more information, may even address some of the things Ken mentioned, but it's not here yet.
Okay.
Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom with a comment? No? Okay. Public comment is done? Do you have something, Joe, you wanted to say?
Oh, can I do a public comment?
Oh, you have Select Board members. You can...
Well, the only thing I would like to make a comment on was just something that was said in the last meeting. Martha, you had mentioned that there was multiple genders, and I was just kind of confused on that too. What are multiple genders?
So, I think that we're talking about the comment that I had been making about folks that identify as non-binary, so there's he and she, and then they and them, or other genders sometimes go by other pronouns, I think is what you were asking?
All right. I was just, I mean, I was kind of confused, because I was thinking that you were saying that there was more than a man or a woman, there's more to it than that.
For gender expression, yes, there are, yes.
You're stalling right now, Martha. You stalled the whole damn thing, from the first meeting in January, to the, over there at the, at the school, and you're stalling right tonight. You're not doing anything, you're giving, all that garbage on the, on the town website is just a stall. There's no, no motion by the board, no action by the board, it's just nothing.
Okay.
And it has no effect on the state. You've got to get something from the board now, and then you've got to get a vote by the town, otherwise you might just want to stay home.
Well, Ken, there are five of us on this board. I am just one, and I think...
It's the whole damn board.
Okay, well, you are addressing to me, and so I'd like to say that we have five other folks.
You said that you were the one that made the thing about the website.
I made a comment saying, I made a comment saying that on the town website, there is.
No, excuse me, Ken, we've had the public comments, we were actually moving on. But just to be clear, I set up the website. We collect data and we put it on the website, so...
But there's nothing going on there. There's no action, there's not. It's just word, lip service, and if Joe can get a motion here tonight, then fine. I'm not saying anymore.
All right. Treasurer's report is next up. The treasurer's not here. There's going to be no report tonight because of personal matters. And we'll move on. Joe, if we want to do that, we can do it and take up other business, or new business at the end.
Sure.
That'll be fine. The DPW report is snow is coming. They did a lot of road grading today to kind of try and get the ruts out of the roads before whatever happens, whatever this turns into, Holy Smoke Road being one of them. We're putting out two bids this week. One is for Granger Hollow at the intersection of Shasbury Hollow, there's a very old culvert there, runs diagonally across the intersection. It's quite, quite a large project, we have a grant for. We hope to get that done this summer. And the second is the very, very long delayed Howard Park rebuilding for drainage, that after waiting for a state permit for two years, we finally got told we didn't need the permit they told us we needed. So, we're bidding that out to start doing the work, and hopefully have that all wrapped up by May, so the park can be up and running, and build the dog park that is waiting on that, fix the tennis courts, fix a lot of things up there that was waiting for this drainage project to get approved. So, those are the two big things for the DPW. Like I said, other than the roads were graded today, those that really needed it, to take the ruts out, and we'll see how much snow we get in the next couple of days. I'll take it from there.
Dave?
Yes.
Is the, is the work up to Howard Park, is that something a local contractor to do, or is that rather specific and needs somebody special?
No, this is all, the drainage work will be out, and we're going to solicit three or four local guys and put it out on a broader scale, because it's, it's anything any, any excavator can do. The more technical stuff, rebuilding or resurfacing the tennis court is kind of a specialized thing. And the tenant, the basketball court is just a paving job, so that'll be done locally. The dog park and fencing is also just local. And we're going to build some kind of island down the middle of the parking lot, so people can, won't be able to do donuts in the lot anymore, because that's getting a little old.
How's Daniel's Road looking?
I'm sorry?
Daniel's Road, how's that looking?
Uh, I actually wasn't up there today, but...
I went up there yesterday, Sunday, I went up, actually, my wife likes to run that road.
Uh-huh.
She goes out for runs, and she said, oh my God, honey, you got to go up there and check this out, she said, the ruts are like...
Yeah, yeah.
She's a tiny person, so it's a real waste.
Joe, I was on the phone checking with Mike this morning, we had Holy Smoke East Road were called in, a couple other roads, and Mike, Mike said he had a list.
They were so deep that, I mean, we had to take, there was no way our car would be able to go into those ruts in Bennington, so we had to...
Well, I tell you, this stuff is actually more expensive than having winter, this warming up and melting and snow and melt, it's...
Like continuous season.
Yeah, it costs a small fortune to, to keep this going, you know, but snow would be better than plowing.
Freeze it up.
All right, so that's all I have for the DPW tonight.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Are we up to other business now?
Yeah, we're up to other business.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adopt the town of Bennington solar, to integrate that with Shasbury, to give us some protection.
Is there a second to this motion?
I didn't hear the motion.
I would like to make a motion that we adopt the town of Bennington solar, to use that as a map, to map out around, I mean, to use that, it's basically, they're, Martha sent me an email, and it was, I mean, their, their layout is really nice, I like it. I don't know how many people have had a chance to look at it, but it was done really well, and it really protects, you know, the beauty of Bennington, and it keeps things hidden away, and which, if you're going to have solar, I mean, nobody really wants to look at, you know, solar panels strung all over the place. If you can hide them away so they're out of sight, out of mind, that's one thing. So I would like to...
Joe, I think, Joe, I think we need to be real careful about following the process since we're dealing with a solar company that is dealing legally, and I, and I think you need to understand the process before we jump to the conclusion of passing ordinances that we can't, that we can't enforce. So I think we need to be very careful. I totally understand, and I've read the, I've read Bennington's proposal and ordinances, but it was, remember, it was a nine-year process that they went through.
Okay, so I'd also like to make a motion to put...
Wait, one, one motion at a time.
We've got, we've got one motion on the floor. There was no second, so does that mean that, that there's no vote on that motion?
With no second, the motion doesn't move forward.
Is there a place for discussion on that motion?
Well, right now, yes, yes.
So we can have, so I would say that even if we were to adopt an ordinance like Bennington's, it is not retroactive. And so, the things that we can do are things that we can go forward with, and so the Planning Commission, and I think the Select Board will, has talked about, kind of talking about these things, but I think that it will not affect, and, and it was said in the meeting at, at the Planning Commission forum that we had, that any adoption of any of these things now will not be retroactive to kind of the things. But going forward, and I think, at least on the... But going forward, and I think, at least on the Planning Commission side, they are thinking and, and talking and will be talking about some of these, these changes.
I agree with Martha.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? With no second, the motion ends there.
I would also like to make a motion for a special election to stop the solar project. This should be put on a ballot for a special election.
Oh, yeah, I'm just thinking, thinking of the words.
Joe?
Yes.
What? You got to remember that the, the actual project has not been set in stone yet. I mean, what they, what they've been, everybody's been complaining about was a, was the first draft. They haven't even been to the Public Service Board with their final thing. So how can we vote against something that we really don't know what the final design is? Like, like Ken said, those people up there are willing to let a smaller project come in. And maybe that's what is going to be happening, is that the company is going to back, back off on the actual size and the scope of it. And a, a smaller project may be what's presented to the Pub, the Public Service Board. So I can't, I can't see voting against something we don't know what's, what it is.
Either it's 80,000 square pa, 80,000 panels. Right now, we've got nothing there. We have no protection at all. At least if the town voted against it, you could get them to work, to work with you. They run that thing right out of the air. It's a Holy Smoke Road. Backing off 300 yards or something.
I understood the request to be to hold an election.
Yes.
A referendum about the project. It's not a motion to vote against the project. And it seems that you could schedule, if you wanted, you could schedule an election that falls after the date, in the end of March, when we're going to know about the project. And then the town, we have a date on the calendar, and the town can then vote it up or down.
So-
And then you would have that, that, you'd have that information to inform how you address the Public Utility Commission when that final trial, as it was described, comes up.
Well, you got to have the bargain with them. You got to, that would be your bargaining chip.
Well, one second, while- You've heard the gentleman. Do you want to amend the motion? Or what we can do, if I can just toss this out here, if this is something we want to explore, this would be non-binding vote to begin with. Because we can't take a vote to prohibit something against our own rules, which currently this may be allowable. If you made a motion for us to investigate this, to schedule a meeting, a special vote, town meeting, we, we would have to talk to Marlene about this. If you'd allow us to have a little conversation, we could get back to you.
Sure.
Because they're also, I have to tell you, very expensive.
Yeah.
Having an election is a very expensive process. It's could cost, you know, 10 grand, easily more. So, but I don't, it's really a question from Marlene, these details. I'm not really sure about it.
But I think we also had a discussion about having a floor vote-
Yes.
At town meeting under other business. And so that is an up or down, non-binding vote that folks can, can come.
You don't get, you don't get as many people at a floor vote.
I, I understand as an Australian ballot.
I feel that the Select Board and the Planning Commission has stalled this thing to keep it going. And then I asked this board on the 30th of January to put it on the ballot then, and they refused to do that.
So we had a discussion about it, and legally, we could not put it on the ballot because there is timing. You have to have public meeting, public things.
You could come two days outside, two days more. You could have come in the Thursday after that meeting. And you refused to do that. You guys are stalling this to just keep it going and get it in here and not even give the- All I'm saying is, if the town voted it down and the Select Board voted it down, then at least you'd have something to bargain with, and you could make these guys do something. These are multimillion-dollar people. They don't give two cents about this goddamn town. And this is the most important thing ever happened to this town, ever, in the history of County Shasberry. And nobody's standing up to them. That's all I'm asking. Stand up to them.
I think one of the things that Art and others have said is that we don't have the full presentation yet. They have not put it together.
They put that thing up to K and C.
Okay, but we have not. They have all sorts of other studies, environmental studies, that we have not seen yet. And so it's, it's premature to say something before you've seen the entire proposal.
To bring the meeting back around, we have a motion on the floor to call for a special election to vote, well, you said to vote no on the solar project. Do we want to amend that motion, see if there's a second? Or wait for more details on what this would actually require to hold a special election?
Would, would you guys be okay with putting on the brakes and waiting a little bit till we get more information? How do you know?
I have to agree with Ken.
With Ken, yeah. How do you guys all feel about this?
You know, we did talk about, about you guys, you know, you did have time to do it after that first meeting. They did give a presentation at that time. On one of the meetings we all went to, they did give a presentation. I'm really unclear why we're holding, holding back on this. And it's really unclear to me, because you know you have at least a large part of the community that does not want this. And I'm just not seeing that you guys are representing us. It just doesn't make any sense, and I don't know why, to be honest.
Art, go ahead. Sorry.
I, I would just like-
Could you go up to the microphone, because it's kind of hard to hear from the back? Thank you.
You're welcome. Amy Smith, Blueberry Hill. I think the support of the Select Board in this project, having a voice, is a huge impact. I know they don't have to listen to you, but I think if the town says, we're opposed to this project. We know we don't have the laws or the ordinances in place, but when you came in, this is not what we were expecting.
That's right.
And we're against it. And I think just a simple act of having that declaration and having that publicly made is a huge importance in what people are looking for. So waiting for the whole project, the project is, is well on its way. It's been started since 2015 or 17 or-
17.
17. So it's well on its way, and we may not know the final thing. But I think as we wait and delay and delay, then it's just time. There could be another company saying, wow, Shasberry's this great opportunity. Let's scoop up this farm over here or this land. So I think the sooner something is done and a statement is made by the town as a whole, the Select Board, the Planning Committee, the better for our town to preserve it.
That's why I wanted to try and adapt the, the Bennington Solar, because I don't know if you've looked at it, but it is, it's done pretty well.
Very well.
We can't mirror that.
Right, and it may not affect this project, as Martha said, because it's too late. But at least it's still-
But it'll protect us from others.
Right, and it's still a statement to that company saying, we actually don't want this. We know you're already steamrolling it in, but we don't want it. And I think that's huge.
Well, they should hear from elected officials.
Yeah.
I agree with you there. And they should also hear it from a, a town vote. You know, if they have the majority of the town saying, hey, this doesn't pass the smell test, get it out of here.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I know town elections are expensive. It's very true, to run. But even having a non-binding vote at town meeting or something to start the process.
I, I think, I think the expense of having that go in is going to cost more than what it would take to put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion. Should we call a discussion on it? Art?
I don't think we had a second on-
Yeah, we haven't had a second, but there's been, we've been discussing a motion that doesn't have a second. So is there, is there a second on the motion? No second, so the motion is closed.
So I would like to make a motion to put on our agenda for our next meeting a discussion about that Bennington solar ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So that we have time to look at it. We can have copies for us to look at and, and maybe look at the language and then go from there and have a discussion on it.
Okay.
I don't think we need a motion. I just think, think we need consensus.
Okay, I, I wanted to-
Yeah, you're a member, you asked whether it would be on the agenda.
Okay, or to just put it on the agenda.
Do you want election info on the next one?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Okay.
But please be aware that the next, the, the town meeting, the one we have on six is not really a, a selectman's meeting. We have to wait to the following one.
So it would be on March 20th?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, organizational meeting.
Correct, okay.
Okay. Okay, the next on the agenda is review of action items, which is just me putting out the bids.
Okay.
And I'll start looking into the Bennington ordinance for the discussion on the next regular meeting.
Okay. Maybe you can send it out to us again?
Yeah.
So that it's in our inbox a little bit higher than some of the other things.
Go back and look at that. Okay.
Okay. Any other business?
And I will, I will bring up, because we have a Planning Commission meeting coming at the end of February to look at those sections of the bylaws, just to see what they are. Because I don't have a copy of them in front of me, and I don't know what they actually say. So I need to look at it, and I'll bring it to the Planning Commission as an action item as well. Just to kind of have a discussion there.
Okay, thank you, Martha.
Yep.
Okay. So, no other business? Entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Martha, seconded by Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Thank you very much for your time, again.
Thanks.